Thanks. Good morning, everybody. For those that don't know, I'm Elaine, the lawn wasker.
Are you back with us full time?
We'll see how my hip does and how my insides do, John. That'll be the deciding factor. I hope I am.
The United States of America, a republic which has one nation, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Commissioner's Community Deputy Franklin.
Went to the Conservation District meeting. And actually, they're probably going to try and get back with us and stuff on these grants, on that decreed grant there because they've been working on one part of it and now WPC is working on another part. They want to try to get that, figure out who's doing what and stuff like that. So they'll probably get back with us in the near future.
Okay. So it's coming right along?
Well, no, nothing really.
But preparing the grant, for the grant?
Well, that's what they're working on, yeah. And that's what this Haley wants to, she wants to do too. In fact, I think they're on the schedule here today, aren't they? I don't know. Well, it actually is, I don't know if it's about that grant or not, but it's.
I had a Board of Crime Control retreat this week. And what we looked at are trends, did some goal setting, and it was informative. This county receives three grants right now from Board of Crime Control, so we have some pretty solid local interest.
And what are those grants used for?
We get a victims advocate grant, and that pays a good portion of the victim advocate salary. The Drug Task Force, Missouri River Drug Task Force, we have a deputy on that. And we actually got about $2,500 more this year than last year, which is nice for the county. And then we've had a couple, but Ugal was a big one, enforcing under each drinking laws. And Nick was in charge of that. That is one of those that's kind of coming around. And there's misdemeanor probation was with them, we didn't get that. And there's another one, I can't think of it off the top of my head.
Anything else?
Nope, that took up most of the week.
Okay. And then I wanted to read to you, and I think you've all got a copy of it, but we're asking you to please be quiet. The commission meeting has been recorded. Please do not engage in side conversations during the meeting, as this will interfere with the sound quality of the recording. Individuals not complying with this requirement will be removed from the meeting. Individuals kicking out of term without first being recognized by the commission chairperson will be removed from the meeting. So please, when you stand to talk, state your full name. And if it's a different kind of spelling, we would appreciate it if you'd spell it too. Okay. Got time to do a few things. Let's do the science stuff first. A letter to Art Pembroke, Lewis and Clark County GIS addressing. Lewis and Clark County GIS is authorized to use Broadwater County rural addressing data for the Tri-County Fire Safety Working Group Fuel Hazard Wildlife Map for the purpose of enhancing public health and safety in the county. Nicole Brown, Broadwater County's planner, GIS administrator, can be reached at 266-9211 or email with her address. So I'm looking for it.
That was brought to us, if I'm not mistaken, by Mike Conkey, who is our temporary interim DES coordinator. And he is also on the Tri-County Working Group. So it's already an established partnership. We work with those counties and neighboring counties on a lot of things. This is one of the very successful ones. So with that, I will move that we sign the letter authorizing the shared information with the Tri-County Working Group.
It's moved in second that we send this letter to Art Pembroke, authorizing them to use our rural addressing data for the Tri-County Safety Fire Safe Working Group. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Sign that, please. I have claims dated 9/10/2013, an amount of $22,957.
I will move that we pay those proved claims in the sub of $22,957.
It's moved in second that we approve the claims of 9/10/2015, an amount of $22,957. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. I have payroll, an amount of $136,953.72.
I will move that we pay payroll.
Second.
It's moved in second that we pay payroll for the period ending 9/8/2013, an amount of $136,953.72. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Is Doug, are they going to be here today?
I don't expect that they will be here. It is on the agenda at 10:45. So if we can maybe wait till, and I don't know if Doug wanted to weigh in on that, there's a little bit of history to share and maybe enough to fill a couple minutes discussion.
Okay.
And everything behind that pink sheet is just old. Old business.
All of that contact. Pardon me?
I would move that we adopt the minutes of September 9, 2013.
Angela, let me just check.
Those are two, one on Tuesday-ish.
I appreciate you getting those right out because at least now we can, even though I've been laid up, I can read what's been going on.
Oh, thank you.
From the Department of Transportation, we have a right-of-way rural highway easement with the CX, which is Cox's Ranch. And that's for the purpose of that new up there at Masters, straightening that road so that there's not so many accidents. Let's go through the two.
Why are we in, it's Cox's Ranch.
It's Cox's Ranch. They're just sending it to us to record downstairs.
There was a motion happening. No, but I thought that bomb here has Cox's apparently.
Evidently. And I'm like you, I thought that was bombs. I mean, because their ranch is right there.
Yeah, yeah.
A letter from Montana Association of Counties. Notice is hereby given that the 104th Annual Conference Membership Meeting of Montana Association of Counties will be held September 27 through the 25th at the Red Lion Colonial Hotel in Helena. The opening general session will could be at 8:30 on Monday, 23rd.
Madam Chair, we've been getting, you know, email notices, I think well over a dozen since June about conference coming up and different things associated with that. Both Franklin and I have registered to attend. And we did talk last week about canceling next Monday's meeting so that we could attend.
And I don't think I'm up to go yet, so I'll just ask you to take notes and share.
Absolutely, I will, yeah.
A statement from Premier Bank.
During that conference, I see they got a solid waste meeting scheduled. That's right, during that conference.
It is, on Tuesday night.
24th, I think.
Yeah, Tuesday night.
Yeah, so I don't, well, that's going to work out. I wish I could get back in time for it.
Is their meeting at 6:00 or at 7:00?
Seven. So, you know, I guess just too bad it's the same week. If they got everything set up, I'd be a little closer.
Generally, everything's over, which, as you well know, their conference around 5:00. So I plan to attend that meeting. I expect that everything will be over by 6:15 in order to make it back.
Unicom, it's associated with the airport, and they're having their annual conference on Thursday, September 26th and so on. Either one of you want to go to that?
Uh, what is it, Elaine?
It's the airport MCAA conference.
Where is it?
Oh, callous spell. The way is away. Do you want to look at it?
No, I won't, sure.
That conflicts with the Maeco conference.
It does.
Yeah.
Sometimes you say like, you should know what you're doing, so much of that I don't understand.
Sure.
Total market value, 2.638 million.
So we're going in the right direction. And it looks like we're saying it's going to be interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary Ellen. Come on up. She and, no, she and Deb and I have been, I haven't been around here, but I have lots of papers for you today. Lots of papers. Just have to be sure you get all.
There's current information and scary information and future information here.
Is it going better there?
Well, it is, yeah. But there isn't one thing going on, there's something else going on. And our latest thing is that.
Thank you.
Everybody's, everybody's getting the same thing here, I hope. Latest thing is that we have a decrease in mental health services payments to the counties, which is significant. And so I don't know who all is going to the Maeco meeting, but whoever goes is going to get a lot of information there. The mental health program is going to be a hot topic there. This top packet here is a letter from our CEO that explains the cut in the mental health services program contracts. And she has some information in the back there that shows the number of MHSP clients that were served by county in 2012 and 2013. And we have 20 eligible for MHSP that have been served from Broadwater County.
Twenty.
Compared to 11 last year, fiscal year 2012. So, and when you think that we haven't had adult case management or therapeutic aid services since early in the spring, and we haven't had a resident therapist since late in the spring, that's a pretty impressive number.
Very much so.
And when you look, though, at the other counties, the other small counties, and what it's, what they're spending, we're not too much different. There are a lot of counties that have an equal size. If you look on the next to last page, it has the beginning of Broadwater County's, our patient services, adult case management. Then the next page has the therapeutic aid services. And so we have $11,695 worth of services from MHSP in fiscal year 2012. When you look at Tool County, or Teton County, or Pondray County, we're all kind of in the same neighborhood there. So.
Do other counties see their case load increasing?
I think if you look on the next page, is it the next, the next top here? Shows the amount of services provided in each county just so far this year in July and August. And you can see that most counties that that amount of money has increased. The total number of people served has increased from 2011 to 2012, which I guess is back on the association year or two.
Doesn't have a total from Broadwater, unless I'm on the.
Look on the next, look on the top of the next page. The computer just didn't put it on one.
Oh, okay, that, okay. I should, I should have.
What are you saying?
The total, total expenses for Broadwater County.
Not turn it back, just leave it.
You had it. You're on a different packet than that first packet today.
Oh, the first packet.
Yeah. The Broadwater County total amount is at the top of the second page.
If you turn this one back, it shows zero. There, she doesn't have anything, but it's finished on the next page.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. But ahead of that strategy sheet, they do have the number of MHSP clients compared from 2012 to 2013. Broadwater County went from 11 to 20. Wayne County was 21, and 19, Pondray was 17, and 20, Teton was 24 and 16. So they're kind of all in there. I think we might have just a few more MHSP people for our population.
And why is that?
I don't know, I knew you'd ask me. Partly because sometimes I think we serve kind of a transient population that's, that's here, on their way to Helena, or on their way to, you know, they're intending to go somewhere else and they wind up here. And this next packet is just the money that's been spent, MHSP money that's been spent so far this year. In these two months, we were given three months' worth of money, and already we've spent more than they allow us in services. And these are services that are mandated. We can't say, "We're not going to provide therapy," or "We won't provide the treatment," or whatever. The law says this is what we have to provide. And anyway, so that's kind of the one there. The amount of money that, that we were allocated this year is about, I think, $80,000 less than last year. I mean, the report was less than the report. If you look back on those strategy sheets, except for the font, it was $943,000 in 2011. 2012 was $876. And now, if they continue divvying it out at the same rate quarterly as they've started to, it'll be $726 this year. So what Sydney explains in that letter is, you know, we're going to have to just reduce services as much as we can. One of the strategies they're going to use is try to put more people in groups instead of individual therapy because we can't afford it.
Do groups work well?
They do for some people, yeah, yeah. Groups are, in a lot of ways, they're a really good thing. Eventually, you need some individual stuff to go with them, and that, we're going to be in short supply on that. The group thing is a harder thing in the rural counties because you don't have as many people to do a group with as a rural. Though we did have, when we had it at the SAK, we had real active group participation and probably had eight to 10 people involved in group therapy at any one time, which was a pretty high amount, and that was a pretty effective deal. Then I did make a copy of this for you, but we had figured this out. The clients that we served as of the 1st of January 2013, we had 4,962 hundred in the Center for Mental Health.
In Broadwater County?
In, in a whole, in all county regions plus. Well, of those, of all our counties, there was 4,700. But then there's about 200 others that have fed into our system from all over the, all over the state. And also 55 out come out of state, which again is people who, maybe they're college kids here, or military dependents, or who knows how they wound up here. But this isn't really their home, but we might have served them. And the same with some of the other counties, you know. Some of them, you can see, they're kind of close to, to be, they're close great balls or something, so that's why they wind up there. But some of them, you kind of wonder about, you know, why we got nine for Yellowstone County, when they have their own mental health service area right there. Anyway, maybe they moved for something.
Some of them just kind of use the system, maybe?
No, because they're all centralized, Franklin. You put somebody's information in and the state knows all about them. So we're working on a strategic plan, and that's what this sheet is. It's a draft of kind of what we're.
Do we have it?
Yes, do that to you. It's the thing you've got your hand on right there. That's just a draft of what we're hopefully going to adopt here in September. They've been working, the staff's been working on it anyway, just as the way it was drawn up. We had several meetings last spring to kind of work this out. And the whole focus of the strategic plan is to make this more efficient, more effective, provide better service to more people and more efficiently. And I think we certainly come a long ways on the efficiency wall, long ways. And then finally, the last qualifying draft here is, is just a financial report for July. I didn't, I, we didn't meet in August, I don't have an August report, and I'll get that at our next meeting here in a couple weeks. But she did a, our functional income and expenses, and you'll notice that Broadwater County had zero income, but we had $2,130 in the expenses to keep everything going down here. For occasionally, a therapist has been able to come down from Helena, or we've had people going to Helena. But they did do, they're using, made an offer to a therapist last week. So hopefully, the therapist said yes. We would really like that. And then she did a comparison on the last page between last July and this July. So, and you can see there on expenses that, a lot of our expenses are a lot less than they were last July, in spite of the salaries and benefits and taxes went up, and repairs and maintenance went up. We had some buildings with leaky roofs and things that we just had to fix. And, but in spite of you having to do that, we're still ahead of the game from where we were last year at this time. So we have to act a lot more efficiently. So that's, that's the mental health story. Like I say, we'll be, Sydney will be at the Maeco meeting, and hopefully we'll get to meet all of you, whoever goes. And one of the things you'll notice on the strategic plan is that they're really going to try to have either Sydney or Trent, who's the services manager, one or the other of them, meet with each county commission as a group once or twice a year, which I think could really help all of you a lot. So, questions?
I have one. Last time you were here, you mentioned that the money that we were paying is going somewhere and not being used quite as it should have been. Where do we stand on that, and should we just continue to hold on to that money?
I think for the time being, yeah. For the time being, I think that's going to be one of the things that's going to be discussed at Maeco.
Okay.
Is what, what the other counties are going to decide to do about this, and maybe as, as an organization, maybe Maeco will make a decision how to move forward with that and recommend that the counties respond to that problem.
So do the people, the clients, pay a portion?
If they can afford it, yeah. They have a, we have a sliding scale. And so there's a, there's an initial payment or a copayment or whatever. The MHSP people generally are not in that position, and that's why they're eligible for that service. But they do try to have everybody pay a little something anyway to get in the door and, you know, have a payment plan going.
But they have the insurance, is it covered?
Insurance pays. Well, depends on the policy, Franklin. Some policies pay, you know, really well. And a lot of those people then go to a private provider instead of the local one because they can, you know. But Medicare pays, but only for, Medicare will not pay for LCPC, Licensed Clinical Psychologists. But they will pay for a Licensed Clinical Social Worker to do therapy, which kind of makes, you know, a tough spot for when we have a hard time getting somebody. If they own the right initials, Medicare won't pay. And so then the option is, those people have to go out of town, and they're the ones that really need to be in town more than a lot of younger, healthier people. Some insurances have limits on how many visits they'll pay on, for mental health. A lot of them won't pay for case management. They'll pay for therapy, but not case management. Well, then one thing that I did need to point out to you too is that even though MHSP funds are being cut and maybe on quarterlies, the psychiatry and pharmacology parts are separate, and they have not been changed, that we know of. So people will still be able to see their psychiatrist as they're supposed to, and receive the medications they're supposed to, which medications, of course, are a huge, huge expense. Oh my gosh, there's nothing more expensive than psych meds, except maybe chemotherapy. They're really, really expensive. So Medicaid covers very well. So Medicaid covers very well. Anyway, we have a lot of Medicaid people. You can see our sources of income there. And Medicaid covers services very well, you know, whenever people need it.
Does it cover Medicaid field or anything like that? Oh, it does cover that, oh.
Yeah, it does. It covers very well. It provides case management and it provides therapeutic assistance too, which most, most private insurers won't pay for therapeutic assistance. We have a VA contract and we see that this July was quite a bit less than last July. But VA has a habit of just paying you some money whenever. And so the next month you might see, or two months from now, you might see a great big amount of money, way different than last. Whatever they pay us doesn't correlate with when services were provided. They have their own way of going about that. Eventually, they come out even.
I guess that's the main thing.
Yeah, yeah, we just have our time, you know.
Trudy, would you like?
Yes, I would. Want to make me a copy of yours?
Sure, thank you. I have one more question. Good. Can you enlighten us at all about the local advisory councils? Or will we do, I would imagine we'll be getting that at MAKO as well?
You know, and we don't even have an active advisory council. We need one. We need one. And I didn't know quite where to begin with that. I didn't know if it was quite my place or whose place it was to start the ball rolling, but we do need one locally. And I think it would, it would help in a lot of ways. One of the things that Sydney and I talked about this last week was, in lieu of the shortage of staff, if we could do a mental health first aid training program that the Center for Mental Health would put on and have armed EMTs and teachers and whoever wanted to volunteer to take this mental health first aid program. And then they would be like, kind of like first responders in the community if someone had a crisis or something and kind of direct them where to go and so forth. That's something that you'll see on the strategic plan, is sticking way out there like for next spring. But she's thinking that we maybe should do it in the rural counties way sooner than next spring because of the shortage of staff. And I do have a few ideas and people that might be good people to be on the yellow health advisory board if we can get that thing rolling. We have some pretty well qualified people in the community that I didn't even know about until just lately. It's like, ooh, what a treasure. So.
Do you want to go ahead and start the ball rolling a minute?
Yeah, I guess I can, yeah, after a good one cooking.
I was just sitting here thinking about you cooking.
Yeah, well, that was my fourth of the morning job this morning. So, yeah, I'll have a little time here early October before our season starts and I'll try to do something.
Do you think we can do that as well?
Anything else, Franklin?
Paul?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. You said something about the Social Services Advisor Advisory Committee.
Mental health.
Mental health. Oh, mental health. I was thinking our Social Services Committee here in the area.
Yeah, the Social Services Committee would be a good neighbor to the Mental Health Advisory Council. They do serve two different functions.
Thank you.
Ma'am. A letter from Martinan Bush Wildlife and Parks. The draft of the Southwest Grizzly Bear Management Plan.
Madam Chair, what we've been doing is adding this information and contact to the Items for Discussion, Action Review and Signature, so that those who get the agenda are also aware. And if they do want to submit their own comment or come to us for comment, then it's on the agenda and they can, it's a reminder and an open door for discussion. I will talk to Tammy about that after the meeting.
Okay. Headwaters Livestock Auction. We have a deal here with the Solid Waste Meeting that was held down there in June. And we've talked about it.
You were gonna contact Jerry?
And I was gonna contact Jerry, and then my health went to heck and I have not. So I still can. I did see, I think, the other day that we could pay the two fifty or whatever we felt was. So is this full stuff?
Uh, yes. I have not gotten to filing anything.
It's not done by us in the day.
On meetings, just a matter of interest, we had a, that meeting in Winston at the Big Bowl and had about thirty people there. The Big Bowl and the grocery store both bought coffee and donuts for the meeting. And there was no charge. They often usually let them attend for us and have staff there as well. No charge. The school will be hosting that meeting on the twenty-fourth for Solid Waste and the Commission regarding the hearing on recycling. They're charging, they're usually charged twenty-five dollars to cover heat, electricity, that kind of thing. Because we are one of their partners, they're charging us four dollars for the evening. So just throwing that out there.
Four dollars doesn't even cover the lights or heat?
No, no. But that'll be the total bill.
We have a letter from Extrup Tech Plastics. Good day. Extrup is a member of the McGraw Network, and your project was recently listed in the McGraw Hill Construction Listing. We believe our products may be of interest to you, and we appreciate the opportunity to introduce you to our company and products.
We have some samples that they sent as well, and I left those in the Commission meeting office downstairs. The reason I brought that up is I don't know that the county has any news. We can certainly talk to Mike and Dana and Brian. But if anybody, you know, a business owner is interested, there's certainly no reason why we can't share the information with them.
What are the product is to?
Here, there's some pictures in there. What projects are they referring to?
I think it's just a general advertisement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's why I brought it up.
Wait, it was written that time?
Yeah, I would guess they might even have a booth to talk to people at the MAKO conference. But I just, I couldn't think of any means. I'm sure there's some, you know, that others would have, but I just don't know where. There's some claims here that need to be signed by the Commission. Do you want me to sign a new initial?
Sure.
And Madam Chair, just, I don't know if Denise is here for the eleven o'clock, but it has been canceled. Yeah, two of the parties can't act, look, and ten million dollar unavailable. So they've rescheduled for the thirtieth at ten forty-five.
The thirtieth at ten forty-five?
Yeah. If you want to stay, you're welcome. But I thought if that's why you're here, it might, we could let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay. Any other cases for the good of the area?
Yeah, since we have a couple of minutes, Career Training Institute, they're at the bottom of the agenda under Items of Discussion, Action Review and Signature. They, we've had quite a bit of experience with this with the county. A variety of different employees have come in. And we have an opportunity for some more. It's a state agency. I'm not sure under whom. But what they will do is they will target people who are local, who need some job skills, and then they will marry those people with somebody who can provide those job skills. All, it's all paid by the state. It wouldn't cost Broadwater County anything. I would like for the Commission to have a CTI employee at the very least. Like I said, I've just not gotten to any filing, and I just don't have the time for it. So that would be one thing. Another thing that we could teach somebody is how to write professional letters, phone etiquette, scheduling of appointments. They could do the agenda, which Tammy is doing right now. There's a lot of things that we could actually teach somebody, and then they could go on to work for any variety of places. At the end of six months, if we had a position here, that has happened in the past. We have a few employees that have come to us from that route. Other offices that have expressed interest are court recorders, county attorneys and county.
I myself have used them when I was court recorder here, and they worked out very satisfactorily. I worked, had used them at Secretary State's office, and they worked out very well. So, and like Laura says, it doesn't cost us a dime.
A little bit of time training, but once you get somebody trained, then they take that load, which would be beneficial. I think a total lot of us right now.
Well, and it would actually help our staff take up some of the load. What do you think, Franklin?
I agree.
So if the Board is in agreement, I'll contact CTI and tell them, yeah, we'll take what they have and work with those department heads. One for the Commission, of course, and then I'll talk to Doug and Carla and confirm it and move forward.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing that.
You bet.
I don't think Denning and Downing are gonna show.
And I don't think they were asked to. I didn't ask them to, and I don't think Tammy or Debbie did either. I don't know that Doug did, so I can't speak to that.
Can we call, is there a phone in here?
Mm-hmm, we can get one, yeah.
We can call Doug and see if he wants to come up.
Absolutely. Ma'am, could I bother you to go ask Doug? Thank you. We're locked in or locked out? I'm not sure which.
I was hoping to be able to come to the Commission meeting last Monday, but when they got done with me at physical therapy, the only thing I could do was go home.
I'm glad you went to that. It's important, but it wipes you out.
It does. It flat wipes me out. You know, like I told him this morning, I said, I understand there's no pain, no gain, but.
Yeah.
I keep telling myself, good Irish girls keep fighting hard, so.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, what's the next step in the budget process? Isn't there a formalized accepting of the budget? When is that scheduled?
I was gonna actually bring that up to you too. We have to advertise for two weeks, and we'll be advertising hopefully today for final resolution on the thirtieth. We have the vote that we took a couple of months ago in April that split the increase in health insurance sixty forty with the employees, but that only went through September. So if we could get it done by the end of September, I think that would be good for the employees and for Debbie, who's doing payroll as well. But if we could have a working meeting on Wednesday, we're this close to being done. If we could have a working meeting on Wednesday, since we'll be gone next week, we could be prepared for the thirtieth, if you two are both agreeable to that.
That's fine.
Okay. And then ten o'clock, regular meeting time? Okay.
And how long do we talk about? Till noon?
I would say as long as it takes, myself. I, you know, it could take us forty-five minutes. It could take us a couple of hours. It depends on us. But I would say, you know, let's be prepared to, you know, bring in a lunch if we need to, call and order a couple of sandwiches, of course, on our times, if needs be. But if we could get it done. If not, if, you know, if it's too long, we can always recess till Thursday and recess for Friday maybe.
I think it's important to get it done.
I do too.
Now, the department head's gonna be there too then, or?
They certainly could. Now, a working meeting would be, you know, it's not open to, it's not free for all by any means. It would be the three of us working, and as we want to, we could certainly call a department head to come and work with us on their particular budget if they choose. But that's, most of them are, I don't think, would need to be there unless they want to. It's more floating mouths to address. But, yeah, that's their call. And that is the case with any meeting as well.
Absolutely.
Which, sorry, with a case with any meeting, they could come?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Just want to see what for you?
I think so. I don't know about after noon, but I'll figure, I'll make it work for the ten.
I've got a doctor's appointment, but I'll change it.
And you want to do a different time? I mean, I'm, I won't, but I just think we have to do it this week.
I agree. No, because I'm in town for therapy, day three.
Okay.
And that's supposed to be an hour, a little over an hour, so that would work fine at ten o'clock.
All right. And you could rest in a chair and just exercise your brain at that point.
Is that kind of like a reclining chair?
Hopefully, yes. I think you might need it.
Hello, Doug, and good morning.
Morning.
We wanted to talk about the standard audit contract with Denning and Downing. What can you tell us? Go for it.
Yeah, I really, as far as the contract, I'm not that well versed on it. I just know we've been standing with Downing for a long time. I was kind of talking to some of the, like Debbie and others, if they, you know, if they thought that Denning and Downing was doing an acceptable job, I mean, especially with the school funds that came up, how that kind of was overlooked. And I don't know if there's anyone out there that would be any cheaper and do any better than them. I just know they, and I, then I don't really even know what our contracts is they charge. I know when I took office, they came in and audited three months' worth of work. And it was, I think, I think it was right around three thousand dollars, and they spent one day. I'm not sure what they.
Well, this says for. Well, this says for, uh, for seven one of twelve through six thirty of thirteen, it's thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. For seven one thirteen through six thirty fourteen, thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And it's obviously a three-year contract. And then for seven one fourteen to six thirty fifty, it's fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, I know they said something to me this year about their, their fees going up due to COLA. So that's probably why it increases a little each year, is they're, they're adjusting for COLA.
I think, and I may be wrong, correct me if, so, um, they contact staff here ahead of time.
Right.
And you send them a bunch of stuff that they can do.
Most, yeah, most of the stuff we send is, um, either through email or on disc forum, forum. So it's mostly electronic format. Um, then when they do show up here for the audit, they usually run my office crazy and they, you know, they say, "I need this receipt on this day for this account." And they just pick random receipts, just to double check and make sure that we have the...
Do you think they're thorough enough Doug? And I don't need to put you on the spot.
You know, the only question that, the only reason I would question that would be what happened with the school funds. Other than that, I think, I, I, I think they are pretty thorough. They, I mean, they, um, they do pick random receipts to look over just to make sure that we're keeping our, keeping the, um, right documents, the supporting documents for them. Whether it's a check stub or a invoice or whatever. And I know, I know when he's here, I know our office gets one reg, it's looking for receipts and checks, and, and he'll just, he'll just throw random things out, he'll say, "I need this and this and this." And, you know, just to make sure we're keeping it, to make sure everything's in order. Um, the only, like I said, the only question I have is with the school funds. And that, from talking to them, that seemed like it was kind of a gray area, like they, they thought that the school auditors were covering it, the school auditors thought they were covering it, and...
But aren't they also the school auditors?
I'm not sure.
They certainly used to be.
Did they?
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to call Pam on that.
And I don't know if they still are, but they certainly used to be.
Yeah. No, but when, when, um, it's usually Tom that comes here, or has been for the last few years. And usually when he, when he covers, at least in our office, he covers how we handle the cash doors, how we handle the cash in the mall, how we handle the receipts, how we handle the journal increases.
Pretty thorough then.
Goes over it with a pretty fine-tooth comb, yeah.
Good. That's very good.
Yeah, the only, like I said, the only, only question of all that comes up is that school fund and the transportation retirement. Kinda how that went so long without a red flag somewhere.
That's completely cleared up now, is it not?
Yep.
And the school's got their money and they're happy.
Yep, yep, I sent the three boards their money and towns and their money and quickly, not quickly, fair, yeah.
The co-op, yep.
Yep. Uh, yep, they're all, it's all clear, the funds are all doing good.
Good. And did the school send over their mail leaves yet?
The, yeah, I gave them, I gave a copy of the mail leaves, they sent over in that, um, email. I gave those to Debbie. It's been a while, three weeks ago, probably.
Okay. What's the board's feeling about this audit contract?
My question, basically, miss out on the, the school stuff, but, uh, how do we know they're not missing other stuff that all of a sudden we throw in our face, you know, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how to answer that. I mean, there's a lot of buttons, a lot of... I don't know if you can set the contract with them and tell them, "We want more growth." Audit how much more it would cost, how much more time would take.
Maybe they can, say, made a change and males come in.
Seeing those, those school funds, that, the only, the only thing I can say about those is, the way I understand it is, since they're, since they were school funds, they weren't being audited by the county. But since they came from county taxes, they weren't being audited by the school, it just sounded like a...
Fall between the grass.
Yeah, yeah. No, but, you know, I, I, I haven't seen, that's the only problem we've had with them since they've been doing the audit. And that, that same, those same funds were also, you know, back when, when Judy first took over, she had problems with those, she was, um, she had to increase the mills.
For retirement and transportation?
For what?
For retirement and transportation?
Yep. And I don't know, I don't know what the problem was when Judy had them, I just know when, I remember Judy telling Rhonda that whenever she did those school, those three funds, the retirement and the transportation funds, that she would always mail one and a half mills extra, and she would put, just in case, just in case protest of taxes or, uh, you know, the mill would shut down or something in Graymont, and we'd have a bad tax year, she, she would always levy...
It was smart on her part.
And I, I don't believe Rhonda was doing that. I think, I kinda think that's what...
What caused the problem?
Well, it sure helped with it, yeah. You know, as far as, as far as the way they conduct their audit, they've always been pretty professional and, and pretty thorough, and, you know, that's the only, the only glitch we were ever hit with them. And I know Tom, when he comes in, he'll, he'll interview different members of the staff and ask them, "How do you do this? How do you do this?" And, and, uh, you know, he just doesn't come in and talk to the department head and take their word for it, he wants to know how things ran. So he's talked to us about separate cash doors in the treasurer's office, and, I mean, puts a lot of thought into it.
Well, and he told me personally that he thoroughly enjoys throwing a curve at them to see what their reaction is. And I think he does do it.
He does, and, and, you know, to be honest with you, I don't think Broadwater County has been one of the easiest places for him to audit because, partly because of the relationship that Rhonda and Charles had for a while, and, and that has put another... Little curve in his system that he had to watch and, and make sure that there were safe checks going on, you know, where, um, Charles would be, wouldn't be allowed to do the daily balancing or anything, or would, anything, or they would both have control over the money, and no one else would see what was going on. So, and that was his...
That was a good move on Tom's part.
It was, yeah. So, when he comes in, I do think that he's, I think he's thorough, you know, I think he's got our best interests at hand. I don't think he's just coming in and doing the job. I think he really puts a lot of thought into it. That's hard to find, somebody that's dedicated in doing that.
Very much so. Laura, what's your thoughts about?
Um, just to add a little flavor, uh, Tom is no longer with Denny and Downing. Uh, several employees in the courthouse, well, in the county, started calling, um, since the beginning of the year, asking questions. He was unresponsive, oh, it's been a while. Uh, repeated phone calls, emails, and nothing. And, um, Scott, having, uh, needed for that audit for the lead department, has gone to Anderson's, Romania for that, because he just could get no response, and then when he did finally get somebody, they closed him off. Um, Kim Denny called, um, and to let us know that Tom, this was an ongoing practice, I guess, and he resigned from Denny and Downing. Uh, they would like an opportunity to come back this year. They are open to being more thorough, they're aware of the school problem and would like to address that. Bob Downey, and I may have the wrong, excuse me, last names, but he's been already talking with Debbie and Tammy, and has said the same. Um, they kinda know Broadwater County through Tom, but knowing us, they don't have to get reacquainted, but they will be coming in with a fresh set of eyes. I think that's beneficial to us. We're aware of what more we want them to do, and they have some ideas on what more they want to do. So, um, with that said, it's gonna be probably Kim or Bob, the owners coming in this time, and I think it'll be a good thing for, uh, Broadwater County to stick with them and to give the owners a chance to come in here and give things a, a much more thorough and harder look, and catch some of those things that Tom missed.
Well, and Kim used to come here all the time. So this is like going home for her.
That would be nice. So, um, I, I think it's, I think it'd be beneficial. And one, one thing that was also said is there's so many new things this year, this would be something totally new if we went with another contract. It is gonna be new anyway, but not entirely new. They know our system's through Tom, so they'll be able to actually concentrate on doing their job, not getting acquainted.
Well, before thorough, I'd be for that, all right?
I think we all would be.
Yeah, now, are we talking about, uh, is this a three-year contract or is it a contract?
Three-year contract.
I just wonder, do we wanna go with a three-year one? Say, make it a year and see what we, how we feel after, how they've done then?
We could.
I'd be in favor of that, I think we...
A yearly contract?
Yeah. That way, I guess we'd have a feeling, and so would, uh, you guys, you are making everything you're doing.
Yeah, I wouldn't see anything wrong with a yearly contract. It, it just helps keep them on their toes.
That's right.
I mean, if they, if they get lax updates, I don't think they have three years, and they just close through it, they not saying that they would, but... If, if they're being audited by us each year on their performance while they audit our books, it's just gonna, I think it's just gonna keep them a little more in touch with the game.
The other thing, do we have to ask for a bid or something like that on, on this?
No, we don't, we don't, so... I think it's an ongoing thing. And the amount is less than twenty-five thousand, so no, we don't have to go to bid.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know, I just...
And what happened with Tom, I know, I've, I've called him several times, and if he's out of town, he calls back. I mean, I've, I've never had a problem getting a hold of him, maybe it was, because he was making plans on people, or I don't know what happened, but I've never had any trouble getting in touch with what any of them want to call. It just seems that, I kinda surprised him when he called and had...
Yeah.
Well, and it sounds to me like this was more than one department head that ran into it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I never had a problem, every time I told him, he called me right back, and maybe I just got lucky.
Were you buying any coffee?
No.
I would entertain a motion then. Regarding your, please share on this.
Um, we signed the, uh, contract with Denny and Downing, uh, for one year, um, and then talked to them, and then we visit after.
Move in second then?
It's moved in second, and we sign a one-year contract with Denny, Downing, and Associates in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And at the end of the year, we review it with them to see whether to continue on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose the same? Motion carried. There's my signature page. Oh yeah, there it is. What I'm gonna do is draw a line through, leave this year, but draw a line through the next two years. If it would be a spine.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order?
For when?
Anything else for the good of the order?
I don't think so, I think things are going pretty well right now. We, our obvious balances are done, the checks are all sent out, the mills are coming along pretty good, the... Sounds like the budgets are... Now, you're going over the budgets this week?
Yeah, we've just agreed to, uh, ten, ten o'clock Wednesday morning.
They'll be at the convention for the rest of the week, but if you need anything, you can give me a call.
Okay. Will you be coming to the commission conference for any of the sessions next week? I haven't looked at the agenda, have clue what's going on.
Yeah, haven't seen what's going on.
Okay, I'll look at it tonight and just send you an email if there's anything that looks like it might be of interest to you.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only thing, I'm gonna talk to Laura a little bit about this, just because I saw her downstairs, um, and I made an appointment to come and talk to you about the mobile home taxes. Um, when you're considering the budgets, Lewis and Clark County suggested that we have a person from the sheriff's office dedicated to mobile homes, at least for the first year. That's just something to think about when you're going over the budgets. It sounds like it's a pretty, pretty impulsive, time-intensive step for the sheriff's office. It can be, it can be a hardship on for sure. Well, just while you're going over the budgets, this is something to keep in the back of your mind, that at least for one year, I think it's gonna take someone that's pretty dedicated and...
So mobile home taxes, how, what do we have, it's outstanding, how much?
What do we?
How much is outstanding on mobile homes?
Um, I think the last time I looked at it was around two hundred thousand. Um, if they're more than five years, they'll... If they're more than five years delinquent, you, you, they're uncolletable. Mobile homes are supposed to be written off each year before January 1st. If they're five years delinquent, that should be something that's done each year. And we've got some of them that are 11, 12 years delinquent, so it's something that just hasn't been, hasn't been done. And I can't tell you why it wasn't. All I can tell you that it is, it wasn't, and that we corrected. A lot of them are probably ones that are moved and we don't know.
Something like never forget now.
Yeah, we had a lady come in last week that had sold her, she had a bill of sale for 2010, and the bill of sale had just never made it to the Department of Revenue, so she got her delinquent tax bill and wondered what was going on and brought her bill of sale in, so we changed the ownership and had mailed the bills to the new owner. Just things like that, you never know. Until you start this process, you never know what's happened with them. They're, they're, they're just extremely hard to, to follow, the serial numbers aren't kept, the chain of ownership gets broken, and, you know, the state won't do a title if they're 76 years old, if they're 76 or older. It's just, that's why, that's why Lewis and Clark said it takes someone dedicated to just doing that. Their officer said, last year, I think he said he collected around 40,000, and this year he's collected 101,000 in delinquent mobile homes. But it's a, he said it's a learning process. He said you learn every year, what you can do, what you can't do, based on people.
Now, did you do your tax sale in July? Is that, okay. And have you been in to buy those taxes?
No, I think we've had one as well.
Only one?
That, you're talking about the mobile?
No.
No, that's just...
Oh, because I know you said those, nobody really wants to pick those up. You said, nobody really wants to pick those up.
Well, and they're not really, mobile homes aren't available for the tax liens. They're, they're a whole, it's an entire different process. That's why we have to do the reds and send the officer out. Once, once the county treasurer does the reds for the mobile home, then it's up to the sheriff's office to go out and sticker them, and it's even up to them to collect the taxes and return the money to the treasurer. Once it goes that far, they can't come into my office and pay, they have to pay the sheriff's office. They have to, they have to work through whoever we set up as the leads on, through the sheriff's office to cover all that.
When I was treasurer, I had a lady from Good Falls, and what she was hardcore. She was going to get me to know the reason why, and she succeeded. I mean...
The, the officer that handles Lewis and Clark told me he's went as far as finding mobile homes that had new windows and windows for taxes, and he told her, sell the new windows, pay your taxes, put the old windows back in, and they did it.
Did they?
Yeah, he said you really have to work with them.
Wow.
But you can, you can go as far as garnishing their ways, putting a lien on their owner vehicles, or you can...
Why can you not do that with personal property, like a ranch or...
Realistic. I'm not sure if the, if the tax lien prevents that from happening, so I might have to check into, but our reals are really in a lot better, better certain sense than that.
Well, part of that is because people come in and buy those liens.
Right.
And to redeem them, it's 10% and...
I, people are worried about losing their property with mobile homes. They're not so much worried about it. And that's what this process will hopefully straighten out.
Very good. I will say one thing, you've had a heck of a year, and you've succeeded very well, Doug.
Well, thanks. There's a learning curve, I'll say that much.
You lost all your hair because of it.
I can't blame that on it. But I noticed none of us growing back, so... But no, I think, I think we're looking pretty good.
Good.
I think they're going about the way they should. I think a lot of the big bumps are over, we're just trying to move on.
Now, meaning you won't be here for the budget when we work on that Wednesday. Is there any concerns you have for your department?
Not really. I think our, our budget didn't change much from last year. The only, I think the only increase that we had was in elections, and it's due to the mail ballots. They're just, it costs a lot more money when you start looking at, at man, each, each person that puts in for an absentee ballot. There's about three mailings a year that you send out to them, and you start averaging the amount of voters that are voting absentee. We had as many, I think we had a few more absentees in the last election than we had people walk into the polls.
Really?
And that's, that's really the, the, the school levy and the hospital levy, both won in the polls. It was the mail ballots that, and it swayed the decision on, and there was a lot of mail ballots, it was going to be a lot more people, it's just handier for them. They, they were compelling us, so they ordered, so they did the mail ballots.
Got guilty.
But when you do a mail ballot, you have, you have three envelopes to go out with each one. It's pretty toxic. That's, that, that's the only, elections is really the only place where my vitu could go out. And part of it's the mail ballots, part of it is the absentee voters bring a lot more work into the office. You have to do a lot more work on, on hand votes, track the, track the ballots, and then have them come back in. I think probably the next election, I'll try and call in elected with election judges to help Joyce with just the, just the clerical part of it.
Makes sense. I saw a thing the other day, had an email, that the state was having a hearing on combining some of these elections, like school. What's the status of that?
The last I saw, they're just, it's, it's still kind of in that informational stage. They haven't made any, any decisions. A lot of the, a lot of the counties are against combining just because of the special districts. It would, it would make so many ballots at the polls that the poll workers would really have the work cut out for them.
You know, I, to hear, sounds great, but the logistics is not there.
Yeah, yeah, in theory, it does sound good, but you know, like our, our polls here at the schools, you know, there might be, depending on what's on the ballot, you might have someone that's in the, in the city that can vote on half the, half the ballot, and with our, the way our precincts are set up, with some people, you know, on the outskirts. I, I don't think it would be that big of a hardship to our county, but with, with other counties, they, where they have special districts within the city.
And numerous school districts.
Right, right. The, the poll workers would have to have three or four different stacks of ballots, and they would, they would, they'd really have to be on their toes where the person lived, which ballot they got. Yeah, it would be a nightmare, and then balancing the ballots at the end of the night. Yeah.
To start combining school precincts, precincts.
They don't mesh.
No, they do not, as you and I both will know.
You know, in theory, it sounds wonderful, but in reality, it does not.
There, there's so many treasurers and clerk recorders that are against it right now, I would like to say I'd be surprised if it passed.
Years ago, Shelly Gantz, and Bozmore's clerk and superintendent of schools, and Bill came before the legislature, and she brought in a map with an overlay, and it showed all the school districts, water districts, precincts. I mean, it was a bowl of spaghetti, to say the least. Her comment was, it's impossible to do.
Yeah. Yeah, and especially where, you know, our election judges come in, they work from seven in the morning or, or a little earlier, if they haven't come in and helped set up until eight o'clock at night, when the polls close, and they have to balance their polls, so they're there for 14, 15 hours at minimum age.
And they only do it once every twice a year?
Right. Right, and they, and we have a lot of good election judges, and they're pretty dedicated, but how much can you expect from, for what they get paid and, and the amount of work, the hours they have to put in, the stress that's on them? It's a tough job.
It's a very tough job. Very tough.
We're, we're just lucky to have people that will come in and volunteer to get election judges.
Do you have to look at any election judges?
You know, we, we, most of them are pretty faithful and coming back each year, and we've got some newer ones that are coming in. We haven't had a problem yet, and we usually have a few extras lined up.
Some of the big counties have gone to combining precincts because they can't get judges.
And we haven't, we haven't had that problem. We've had, in fact, we've got a few of them that, that are kind of put out if you don't call them. You know, and, and sometimes you don't have, you don't need all the judges, you just have to pick a few. And no, we've had some pretty dedicated judges, and they want to serve, and thankful we have them.
They feel like it's their civic duty.
Yeah, and they, it's, it's, it's not an easy job. It's very nerve-wracking when you, when you have to account for every piece of paper that goes through that election, and they're basically audited every election. They have to come up with the numbers, and if they're a ballot off, they have to, they have to find out where that ballot went, and it's just...
There's no way you could stuff the ballot box?
No.
Not with the kind of things that are in place?
Last year, we had during the, well, during, not last year, during the general election, we had 75 ballots that were, it was a two-page ballot. We had 75 that were perforated on both pages, on, well, not on both pages, they were perforated on the top and the bottom on the second page, which meant the machine wouldn't take the ballot. And people would put their first ballot in, they would take it, okay, they'd put their second ballot in, and then kick it out. Only the first ballot's all the way already in there, what do you do? And they're just handling it very well. They, they did a good job. And found out what, we found out what the problem was, and just pulled those 75, they, I think they had, I can't remember the exact number, I think there were 17 or 18 people that, that voted before they actually realized that they were perforated in two places, and it's hard to see. And so we had to, we had to fix those 18 ballots to be correct, and probably the, the remainder of the 75, that when you do that, then you've got 18 ballots that...
Don't count.
Yeah, you have to spoil, use the second ballot, and then you've got the other 57 that you have to spoil. And at the end of the night, when you're trying to count all that, plus your provisionals, plus your absentees that did get returned, plus your whatever else, whatever else they have going on, yeah, it's, they're hands full.
Wow.
And that's a, I think it would be good to call a few of the election judges in, like I was saying, to work with Joyce before the election comes, it's going to just make them a little bit more savvy as to what's going on.
Well, and it would be good for Joyce to have that extra help.
Right, yeah. And the elections are a lot of work, and a lot of times they're coming in, and at the same time, we're having our tax bill go out, we're having taxes come in, and it's kind of a double win, and with Joyce being right there by the door, it's hard to concentrate, especially on a Monday when they end up here in the meetings, and, and so Joyce is kind of covering the quarter and the quarter and the elections, and if she had a couple of people to help her, I think we'd just keep her, keep her mind a little bit more of these, that the job was getting done.
Wow. Well, your crew does a good job.
They do. Lucky to have them.
Yes, you are. Paul?
Just a point of information, the last study that I saw that studied the cost of a mailer going out, $7.32, and that was, that was, I think it was an average of $12 an hour was being paid to the person who sent them out, but that's how much it costs to send out a, a mailer or an absentee ballot. That doesn't take into account the cost of processing it when it comes back in.
It doesn't surprise me.
Just something to keep in mind for your budgeting.
We just had envelopes come in for elections last week, and it was two hand cards full of envelopes, and that won't go very long when you, when you're using three envelopes for mail-in ballot, plus the confirmation cards, and it's getting expensive. But we're looking, there's a company in Helena, Lake River, that will, they don't print ballots, but they always can mail the ballots out for us. We use them once last year, and they were discounted on their mailing, but the county's not allowed to get. They actually, they actually pick our ballots, fold them, mail them out, and the cost of that to send out, as it would for us to, but it saves our office, all that work.
Don't they do the voter information pamphlet also?
So I need anything that'll save us that much work and not cost us any money at a time when you were doing taxes or mailing out the tax bill. That's, that's just a big help.
For sure. Well, thank you for coming up, Doug.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Deborah? Come on up.
I'm Deborah Lofantane with Montana Guard. And this is Laura Fister, and she's with Newfields. And we've been working on a proposal for the Montana Guard for the past few years. And we wanted to tell you a little bit about it because we were hoping to get a lot of support for this program that we're working on. What it is, is over the past ten, fifteen, twenty years, as encroachment has been happening towards military installations, it's caused them, because we're, we're noisy, dusty, dirty. And so it ends up causing the issues with the neighbors who ask us not to do training from this hour to this hour. And pretty soon, our, our training gets very limited. And then in some cases, it's gotten so limited that they have to do the military installation. And so as that has occurred, the Army developed a program, which they call the Army Compatible Use Welfare Program. And they put some money into that program. And all the states sort of compete for this dollar. And what, what this money is meant to do is buy up conservation easements around military installations. So that helps a little bit in the encroachment issue. At, at Fort Harrison, right outside our eastern door, there have been a couple of proposals for major developments. And this was a little bit before the economy crashed, so at one point in time, there was a voluntary development, a voluntary pool for seven hundred units outside to our eastern fence area. And then another five hundred on the other side of the road, which was, you know, like twelve hundred units, which when people come from California by those units, they're not quite as understanding enough with our, our Chinooks and our Blackhawks landing and making the noise and vibration and that sort of thing that happens there. So what we've put together is a proposal to compete for some of this funding on a nationwide basis. And the idea is the military installation cannot own the easement or the land. We have to partner with conservation groups. In our case, it's gonna be the Conservation Fund and/or the Pricely Pear Land Trust. And we also have a potential partner in the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation. And the idea is that we try to, you know, put together as much of this money that we have and they also contribute to the an easement where it would be to an advantage of all of our partners. For instance, if at Limestone Hills, for instance, on the, on the east west and southern side is some elk habitat. And so we, we've, you've got two maps in front of you that sort of give, give you our priorities. Yellow being number one. Our three priority areas of, of course, are Fort Harrison because that's where we, we have the most likelihood of encroachment happening. Limestone Hills is our fourth priority area and that's in blue. And we've identified larger chunks of land that, and we might be interested in achieving conservation, and so on. And that was after discussions with Fish, Wildlife and Parks, WLM, the Elk Horns Working Group. Where we might be able to buy up something for the elk habitat. Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Mostly that this is a voluntary program, the only working with willing landowners. And that's where the, the critical part of having local conservation groups like Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, Pricely Pear, involved. Because they, they already have the connections with landowners who might be interested in something like this. The purpose of these zones is to really, for the proposal, is to show exactly what areas we're, we're interested in exploring easements with willing landowners and with our partner conservation organizations. The, the highlighted areas are privately held lands, so you wouldn't see any public lands highlighted in those, because those are already seen to be having a level of protection. It's only the privately held lands and, as Deborah mentioned, the larger chunks of of privately held lands that are surrounding these installations.
And it's totally, you know, in a volunteer program, if a landowner isn't interested, that's fine. We're just sort of trying to find those areas where it's sort of critical to our training. At, at Fort Harrison, we have flights that come in from the north and leave from the east, which in terms of noise is the greatest, greatest noise area. So you've sort of indicated in the yellow, our first priority area. The issue is we're in competition with all the other states who might have more critical areas. So